Okay, time's 6:00 PM. We'll go call this regular October War Meeting to order. Mr. Tony Young, would you deliver our invitation for us? We don't care.
My pleasure. Rise. Heavenly Father, thank you for the opportunity to gather together tonight. Please look over this board as I make difficult decisions moving forward. Look over each and every one of those that are here tonight. There are some difficult decisions that this board is wrestling with and people in the crowd are interested in, and I would just pray that you give this group guidance to make the right decisions. These things we ask in your name. Amen.
Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
As we said, this is our regular war meeting for the month of October. I know there are some issues we're dealing with that is a great concern and interest to the community, and we do have a group of people who've came tonight, and we appreciate you being here. We have scheduled a town hall for Monday to address specifically, but since we do have people here now, and we do, I know the media's here, and I'm sure there's some people that would like some information and some stuff clarified tonight, I am going to ask Dr. Wilson, Superintendent Schools, if you'd just provide us an update on transgender issue, please.
Goodness, Chairman. I would like to state to reiterate that we are having a town hall meeting to address specific questions and concerns of each person that's there, and at that time you'll be able to ask those questions. I would like to say a couple of things, though, that the board has not developed any policy on transgender students. There is not a policy. We do have several transgender students in our school system. One of those students have asked to use the restroom that he identifies with as is his rights, as stated by current 11th Circuit Court ruling. We are under the 11th Circuit jurisdiction, and it's very clear what the rights are for that transgender student. If you want to look it up, it's Adams versus St. John's School District out of Florida, and it was heard in the Southern District Federal Courts. I do have and always have had a concern for the safety of all of our students. I've asked that our staff be very, very diligent in monitoring our restrooms, as they are supposed to every day anyway, and with that diligence of monitoring those restrooms, we don't want any child in there being bullied, also smoking and vaping, and to ensure that all of our children are safe. Any student going forward, any student can use any of the single-use restrooms that historically have been for staff members, that they are not comfortable using the larger restrooms. The question is when does, that the courts have not answered, but we have to deal with, is when does a child transgender from one sex to the next, in this situation or any situation, if it's a girl to a boy or a boy to a girl? We will look at each one of those on individual court, I mean, individual case-by-case basis from our administration. We are not going to allow, or will we ever allow, just any boys walking into a girl's locker room and deciding on that day that they're going to use that restroom. That's not the intent of any of this, and it will not be permitted. We will look at every one of the situations that do arise on that case-by-case, and some of the plans that we do have, because this is our 11th Circuit Court ruling. We have to live by this until either another court rules differently. This particular case is being appealed to the 11th Circuit Appellate Court on December the 2nd. We'll have a ruling for it maybe this summer. The United States Supreme Court is looking at three Title VII cases and just heard one of those cases, somewhat similar circumstances, and we'll be looking towards the Supreme Court on better decisions, and we will respond accordingly to those decisions. In the meanwhile, as far as our facilities go, I have already talked to, with our architects, I've talked to Barone Associates a couple of times even today, and what it would take and how quickly we could turn multiple-use restrooms into single-use restrooms for every child, and we will be going down that road as quickly as we possibly can, and our staff will diligently be monitoring all the restrooms to ensure that everybody is protected and Every one of us up here took an oath, and part of that oath was to enforce or go by not only the Constitution of the United States, but the Constitution of Georgia, the law of the land. Currently, the 11th Circuit ruling is the law of the land, and that's where we are today. We'll be able to give you more answers and answer individual questions and concerns Monday night at the high school at 6:00 in the Performing Arts Center. That's my report, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Dr. Wilson. Move down to item four, approval of agenda. Board meeting, I believe everybody's had a chance to review and look over the agenda for tonight. Any questions on the agenda as presented? If not, can I have a motion to approve? Motion by Mr. Smith, so here a second.
I second.
Second by Ms. Yumblin, any further discussion? All in favor? I'm not opposed, thank you. This time, we do have a special student recognition, and we'll call on High School Principal, Mr. Chris Wallace, if you will, please.
Thank you, Jeremy Green, board members, Dr. Wilson. Pleased to get this opportunity tonight to stand before you guys and recognize some pretty awesome achievements by some of our students, and also recognize a local business here that serves our community for all of the support, guidance, and help they've provided for us and our students over the last several years, and so we want to recognize them tonight. But I'm going to start out first by discussing our esports team. So, this year, 2000, or excuse me, last year, 2017, 18, or 19, Georgia High School Association added esports as an option if you decided you wanted to pursue this as a school, and it stands, of course, for electronic sports, which is a fancy name for video games, but it gets much more intense than just a normal video game. So, I'm going to ask Will Nix to come up and tell you a little bit more about this. Mr. Nix is our computer science teacher at Pickens High School, but he's also the esports coach. So, Georgia High School reaches out and says, "If you want to have an esports team, got to have a coach, got to have players. Here are the rules, regulations. If you have somebody take it on, then we're, you know, we're going to support this and we're going to state championship and all that." So, Will was generous enough to express the interest in doing that, and I'll let him tell you a little bit about how the competition works, and then we're going to recognize these students that participated and are the reigning first-ever inaugural state champions for esports in the Rocket League Division. So, Mr. Nix, would you be so kind to tell them a little bit about what you do?
Hi. Real funny things, I appreciate everybody coming to see us. So, with Rocket League, it's pretty much soccer with RC cars, and if you ever get a chance to watch it, you come to watch the event, it's a lot of fun. I thought, like Mr. Wallace did, it's nothing but video games until I watched these guys play, and then I realized this is not something that I could have done when I was their age. The hours of dedication, amount of work, it's just like anything else. And with this, we took on Calgary Day, which is one of the largest private schools in South Georgia, and we weren't expected to win, we weren't expected to be close, and well, we showed them. And we showed them very well. We won 4-0, we only let them score one goal, we kept the top scorer in the state of Georgia from scoring any goals. And my guys and gals and everybody else, we just, it's something we wanted to do, and we didn't realize how serious it was until we got into the finals. And we are extraordinarily proud to represent Pickens County, and when I was asked to do this, I was like, heck yeah, this is in my, I love competition, I love sports, I've coached about everything under the sun, and I enjoy doing it, and I can't wait to bring us another one on this year.
Stay up here, Will, if you will.
So, we have a nice state championship trophy that sits in our trophy case at the entrance at Pickens High School right now. Haven't had one of those in a while, so it's always cool to have a state championship in anything and get some notoriety for our kids. But as with historical tradition sets itself at our school, we also provide those that win state championships, whether it be individual or team or unit, a Jostens-created special state championship ring, and so we have some students that are here tonight, and I don't know if they're all here, but we're going to recognize them anyway, so I'm going to call them up and present their ring to them, and I want to thank Jostens for helping with the design. The Freedmans and the Fastest Dog actually financially contributed to paying for these rings and have been a great supporter of the esports program here with our students and allowing them to come to their place and practice and work on things. So, it's really been a great partnership with them, and we appreciate their generosity and their interest in this program. It's definitely a growing event in the state, and I hope these guys get another chance at it this year. So, I've got one right here, and I'm going to make sure I get his ring, because he's right here beside me, but I'd like to call up Mr. Carter Logan. Is Madeline here? I love Eric here, he's already graduated, he's a student at Georgia State University, so we don't know if he's going to be able to make it, but let's give Eric a hand. Mason Watkins. And we also got Mr. Nix a ring, so Mr. Nix, if you'll come forward here. And so, the person that allowed us to let this happen and gave us approval to do this, we also got superintendent ring, so Dr. Wilson, would I present you with a ring as well?
Picture.
Not only did they help us get the ring, but they are helping us provide some really good gaming machines this year, and that way it makes our little path a little easier, and we can't, appreciate it, but also getting our jerseys and just our full sponsors, and we can't do enough without them. Thank you, the Freedmans are family to me, and just, yeah, thank you so much.
Thank you. Congratulations to these students, Mr. Nix, Pickens High School Esports Team. Ms. Christina Garner, I believe you have some 4H presentations today, tonight?
My name is Christina Garner, and I'm the county 4H leader, and we're here this week to celebrate in a little bit. We have some students here with us today that have already had some amazing accomplishments this year. Two of them aren't able to be with us tonight, but Ryan Johnson competed in the Forest Shootfield Day. That's a really challenging contest. He has to do a lot of studying for tree diseases, insects, and a lot of ID. He competed with nearly 70 other individuals and came out placing fourth. So, it was an extreme accomplishment for him, and he is in the high school. Five other 4Hers most recently competed at the Georgia National Fair, which is still continuing right now. We have some kids that are down there competing right now, showing their hogs, but we do have some here with us today. Sherlin placed second with her 4H mini booth, Rethink Your Drink. Sherlin also competed in the Cusa Valley Fair, and she won first place in best recipe for her homemade fudge, so now she has to bring us all some fudge. Next, we have Sky. She placed second with her Save the Sea Creatures booth at the Georgia National Fair. And she, and Sky, you can come up. Sheila competed at the Georgia National Fair in a very competitive public speaking contest. These kids were good. They were much better public speakers than I could have ever imagined, and she won fourth place in the informational category. Sophia Scott also competed in the public speaking contest at the Georgia National Fair. Hers was also very competitive, and she competed in the inspirational speaking category, and she was fourth place. Sophia also competed at the Cusa Valley Fair. She came home with 10 award ribbons, several first place and second place things in various craft categories. We're very proud of her. Next, we have Sarah E. She competed in the recycle art category at the Georgia National Fair. And then Connor Watson also competed at the Cusa Valley Fair, and he placed first in best in division in his 4H record book. And the 4H record book is all of their records throughout the years, so that means that he had the most activities and the most impact he could show within his community in his record book. Connor couldn't be with us tonight, but he is a part of the junior high school. Colin Watson is a member of the high school, and he also won first place in best in division for 4H record books. Please join me in giving them a round of applause. So, while we're here tonight, we would also like to celebrate National 4H Week. This week is National 4H Week, and it's a time that we get to celebrate all the things that we get to do. And of course, these competitions and everything that we do in the school system will not be possible without your support. So, tonight, I want to invite Sophia Scott up to give her inspirational speech to tell you firsthand how 4H impacts these 4Hers and the opportunities that they can have. Sophia?
Testing. Have you ever found a four-leaf clover? I want to invite you to walk down Ramon Lane with me a moment and remember that feeling. Maybe you saw it out of the blue, you didn't even have to look for it, and instantly you thought, oh, wow, today's going to be a great day. Maybe you had to hunt for it, finding thousands upon thousands of stinky three-leaf clovers until you found the jewel and the crown, the four-leaf clover. Do you remember that feeling? To me, it's kind of like when you're expecting to face mystery meatloaf in the lunchroom, ugh, only to find that the menu has changed to fried chicken and waffles. Mm-hmm, you get it now, don't you? It's funny how we think that four little leaves on a green stem are somehow going to change your luck and possibly your lives. More friends, more happiness, more success? Well, I'm here to tell you about how nine months ago, I discovered a four-leaf clover that is doing just that. It has been giving me all of those things, and it is my hope that today, my words will help you understand what it can do for you, too. Now, it's time to be a little honest with you. Sometimes when I go to school, I get really frustrated because I feel like the work just isn't challenging enough, and on top of that, there have to be those people who tell me I'm not good enough or either not smart enough to do the more challenging things. Yet, when I discovered 4H, I was able to discover what I was interested in, and the beauty of it all is that the people in 4H began to recognize the potential that I had to do these great things. I know there are a lot of kids out there, they're just like me. They're searching, they're trying to discover where they can fit in, they're looking for a place where people take the time to listen to what they have to offer. Maybe you know one of those kids. 4H leaders and volunteers will work hard to help them understand what they have to offer. I will conclude with this story. There once was a man who owned a mansion looking out over the beautiful Rocky Mountains. Everyone who came to his house would say, oh, wow, what a wonderful view. However, one man from Texas came, and he said, I hate it, you can't see anything because the mountains and the trees are blocking it. Isn't that how it is with us sometimes? Not realizing what is right in front of us, what's in us. But 4H gives you a new lens to look through, helping you discover all of who you are and all of who you can be. These past nine months, I've competed at DPA, gone to many community services, and gone to 4H summer camp with my friends. So, what's stopping you? Look through a new lens and join 4H.
That way, someone can say happy National 4H Week, and thank you for enabling us to do this.
You make Pickens County proud. Thank you very much. And thank you to Ms. Tracy Buckingham and Ms. Christina Garner for all the work y'all do with these young ladies. Item six, superintendent reports, Dr. Wilson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Our first is our financial update.
He has one more recognition.
Oh, we got one more recognition, I'm sorry. Oh, oh, wow. I apologize.
Not yet. That's all right. Mr. Wallace? No, that's all right. I'm not sure I want to follow that anyway, to be honest. I will do my best. So, as you know, we have a lot of help in our community to help support the many things we have going on at Pickens High School, and we absolutely could not do what we do without the community support we have and from everybody in the community. But I want to recognize one group tonight, and I'm not sure if they were able to make it here, but I want to recognize some folks from Piedmont Healthcare, and specifically Piedmont Mountainside here locally. A few years back, we worked with Piedmont to try to get some of our work-based learning students in. As you know, healthcare is a huge field and a growing field for our students, and, you know, we wanted the opportunity to get the kids in there, to get them some shadowing experience, to get them some work experience, and they have been a great partner in that, and it's been a great experience for our kids, so that's been awesome. But one thing I really want to specifically hit on tonight, just one of the many things they've done for us, is they have helped us provide AEDs in our schools to help keep everybody safe. And in July, I believe it was right at the beginning of July of 2018, we had a custodian that was working in the summer, you know, pass out in our school and have to receive medical attention, and unfortunately did not recover from her condition. And so, we have asked them to provide an AED in that specific area to honor the life of Miss Jerry Payne, not for any other reason than to make her legacy because she poured a lot into our school and helping us out, and was just always a great presence in our school and had a great attitude and a great work ethic. So, we want to recognize her and actually, you know, commemorate this to her and her life and her legacy. So, they helped jump on board and did that, and we have that in place now. It's right outside of our cafeteria area, and so I wanted to do something nice for Piedmont, just to show them how much we appreciate this gesture and also their partnership and all the things they do for us to help support what we do in our, all of our schools, but specifically at Pickens High School. So, CEO Denise Ray and Director of Risk Management, Mary Gorley, are two people that I've gotten to know through this process, and I know there are many and countless others, but we got them a, just a certificate of appreciation, and it just reads, "Thank you for your generosity and support of Pickens High School. The numerous individuals who have worked to develop a great partnership with our school should be commended and recognized." So, I got them a framed, just certificate of our appreciation, but also got them something else that I felt like would be something nice to sit around and show that, you know, not just throughout our school, but throughout our county with our Diamond P logo and its piece of marble laser engraved with our Diamond P logo that our students did at our high school, and it says, "Thank you for your generosity and support of Pickens High School," and it's presented to Piedmont Healthcare, and it has today's date on it. So, I would like for, I don't think they made it, but I would like for everyone to give them a round of applause, and if you do know those individuals and you made Piedmont, please help me express to them how appreciative we are of their support of our school and our students and our community. So, thank you Piedmont, Denise Ray, Mary Gorley, we owe you a debt of gratitude. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wallace. Very fitting, all the Piedmont does for the school system. I did typically, if you're here for student recognition, you're more than welcome to stay, but you're absolutely more than welcome to step out, too, if you want to. Up to you totally. I just get once you feel like you had to stay. We'll wait just a second. Now superintendent reports, Dr. Wilson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Now, we'll try to give Ms. Smith.
Thank you, Dr. Wilson. Martha has brought up our general fund report. As of October 7th, the revenue collected was 7.11% of our budgeted revenue, and we've expended 14.93% of our budgeted expenditures. Just to give you an update, the five-year history, we saw rent in the newspaper as we were required to do. The digest was taken by the county down to the state at the Georgia Department of Revenue and was accepted, so we should be hearing from tax bills relatively soon. Typically, the tax bills are due around the first week of December, so it might be pushed out. We were a little behind where we have been in the past, so I'd say maybe a week later. Don't have confirmation on that date yet, but we'll let y'all know. Of course, that revenue we depend on as we get into about halfway through the year, so we'll start watching that account. Hopefully, our revenue will start to float in in November and December. Do y'all have any questions on general fund? Splat revenue for the month of October was $447,652.40. Interest earned was $2,120.77. Expenditures totaled $1,392.971.16, and the month-end splat balance was $4,464,968.70. Of course, we have a multitude of projects going on. I believe right now we're averaging 10 or 11 at one time. We are working on a new splat cash flow for y'all and hope to have it within the next week to send out to the board, just so you can see where we are on all these different projects. We do have separate contracts on the individual pieces of the, we have Phase 1 and Phase 2 at Pickens Jr., and a multitude of projects at the high school. So, we'll give you an update on each one of those projects, like I said, hopefully within the next week, so you can see where we are with each one. We have not transferred money from our designated funds yet because the balance was so high at the end of September and October, or excuse me, September, we just didn't move our money yet, there's no sense in it. When that account starts to get to a point where we know the checks are going to exceed the balance, we will go ahead and make that transfer. It should come up pretty quickly, so we just keep an eye on that every day and with every splat run we do. Also, on this report, which is very, very tiny to me from over here, our 12-month average is just over $440,000, so it's holding its own, and we're pleased with that. Of course, we budgeted a little less than that, we don't depend on that, but so anything above about $425,000. But, so anything above about $425 is grading, so that is put toward any splat project that we have. Do y'all have any questions? We do not have a draft audit report yet for FY '18. I'm not sure what the holdup is, but as soon as we get one, I'll have, Dr. Wilson will have it and he can send it to you for your review. It just, I've contacted them and they just don't have it processed yet.
All right. Operations construction, Mr. Young.
Thank you, Dr. Wilson. Start with maintenance. Maintenance is busy with day-to-day work orders and repairing our schools. Thank God, for winter. I'm about ready for some colder weather, but that does mean a lot of extra work getting the buildings ready for the cooler weather as it comes. Everything's got to be winterized. All the outbuildings have to be checked. Outdoor water hydrants have to be taken care of. Heating systems are also at this, at this point in time undergoing checks to make sure that they're ready for what's coming. Amy mentioned, and I will go ahead again, all the projects are moving forward. They are on time and they're under budget and they are looking awesome. For those of you that had not had an opportunity, I'd come by sometime and we'll take you to see it all. But if you have a chance, drive by the high school and the junior high and check it out. There's some impressive stuff going on. Transportation. This past weekend, of course, was the Marble Festival and we had four drivers participating. I spent the weekend driving a shuttle myself. I'm not quite as good with my shuttle as our bus drivers were with their buses, but everybody had a good time. It was, there was a great turnout for the Marble Festival quarry tours. It was a lot of people. We have also just completed the classroom training plans. We've got three new people in active driver training, but even Stacy was saying a couple of days ago, that even with that, we are still short and in need of drivers. We're about to start skilled assessment with all of our drivers and monitors next week. And we have also, at this point in time, completed our fall emergency bus evacuation drills at the schools. So that's been taken care of. And I would like to remind everybody that October 22nd is Bus Driver Appreciation Day. Kiss a bus driver. Food services. October is National Farm School Month and this October's feature item is Oh My Squash. All schools featuring one or more squash varieties on their menu to recognize Georgia's Harvest of the Month vegetable. Students at Hill City have been hard at work growing and learning about this vegetable group and will be harvesting several varieties of squash from the school garden later this month as part of the Ag in Classroom program. In addition to squash, we are serving other in-season locally grown produce, including apples, tomatoes, and cucumbers. We also have coming the week of October 14th through 18th, the National School Lunch Week. National School Lunch Week theme for this year is "School Lunch: What's on Your Playlist?" We spotlight how today's school cafeterias are sobering up the menu items that kids want to eat with increased choice and customization. Pickens County School Cafe is proud to participate in the National School Lunch Program, which serves more than 30 million children, not just in our schools, but across the nation every day. National School Lunch Week is a time to recognize the importance of a healthy school lunch in a child's life and the impact it has inside and outside the classroom.
Mr. Young, you'll go ahead to the attendance.
Yes, sir. We'll go ahead and jump into attendance. Start with the staff attendance. Last month, Harmony Elementary, almost 98%. Not to be outdone, Pickens Junior High at 97.38% this month. Dr. Flatt, if you would come up. Dr. Flatt is not here. Coach, come on down, please. Congratulations. All of our schools had very good attendance. PJ had the best. Moving on to student attendance. Last month, Ms. Stephanie at Tate Elementary was our winner. This month, the banner is going to Jasper Middle School with an attendance rate of 96.66%. Mr. Thompson, congratulations, sir. That is impressive. He'll be getting the banner. I'd also like to point out to everybody that, and you can see up there on the board, that every single one of our schools were over 95% on attendance for the month. That is, that is awesome. One last report, Dr. Wilson, for me to give, is our dropout report. Of course, August, we're cleaning the books up and we're taking care of those students that have not shown up, of course. And so, we always start off a little bit high. For the month of September, I'm proud to report that we only had one, of course, and one is too many. But we only had one dropout for the month of September. And so, that concludes my report. Dr. Wilson?
Thank you, Mr. Young. Mr. Chairman, that's closing, Superintendent.
Thank you, Dr. Wilson. Going down to action items. First action item tonight is approval of personnel action report as amended. To have a motion to approve the P.A.R.'s amended. Motion by Mr. Smith. Do I hear a second? Second by Ms. Enos. Any further discussion? All in favor? Five and none opposed. Second action item, approval of guaranteed maximum pricing for our tennis complex at Pickens High School. Dr. Wilson?
Mr. Chairman, we are requesting approval of the guaranteed maximum. Here again, on all of our projects, we've had our guaranteed maximums and we have under, we've come under every one of them so far. And I expect that we'll do the same thing with this one, but this is our guaranteed maximum, which also includes a lot of site work. That, if you've not been out there lately, that is a huge footprint for our tennis complex. Total site work and everything with the rest of the construction there is $1.2 million and I would request that you put this as a maximum.
For informational purposes, this is, one of the things we encountered is we had to install a retention pond, is that correct? So that's where I think a lot of the site work cost has come into. Any questions on that? Do I hear a motion to approve the guaranteed maximum price for the tennis complex at Pickens High School?
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Ms. Enos. Do I hear a second? Second by Mr. Smith. Any further discussion? All in favor? Five and none opposed. Thank you. This is action item number three, tentative approval of a policy for public review. Dr. Wilson, can you please give a little information on this?
This is a policy that our general assembly has allowed a couple of years ago to possession of weapons by employees. A couple of things about this I would like to say is that, no, we're not arming teachers. Where there's some teachers that I'm very, very dear friends with, that I would not let have a toy gun. It will be under a lot of scrutiny, a lot of background checks. It'll also be a lot of training with our sheriff and through our training department there. It'll be qualifying and it will also be like an air marshal, flying planes. You'd never know on that plane who is an air marshal. Well, it'll be the same thing within our school system. No, kids, students, teachers, parents will not know what employees have been approved to carry a weapon on school property. And we'll have those guidelines, but it will not be noticeable or available for any mistakes for children to grab a gun or anything like that. We'll assure that none of that will happen. One of the reasons that we want to go forward with this policy, heaven forbid if anything ever occurred on school property. But I know that myself and our board can look a parent in the eye in case something did happen and say that we did everything within our power that the law allows to protect your children if we don't have this policy. It's just another policy in order to give protection and safety for all of our students and staff on campus. If you want a copy of it, we'd be glad to get you a copy of it. It'll be online for your review. And I'm requesting that it lay on the table till the end, till next month and at that time may be able to approve it.
I apologize. We'll, we'll continue with that. And just for clarity purposes too, this is again a tentative approval. And this policy, if approved by the board tonight, will lay on the table for 30 days for public review and public comment. And then it would have to come before the board again at our regular board meeting in November for a final approval of the policy. That's correct.
That is correct. It is correct. And we'd like to say that there are a number of school systems throughout the state of Georgia that has adopted, that have adopted a very, very close similar policy to this one.
Any questions on that?
I have a question.
I'm sorry, sir. This is, this is for the board members only. Do I hear a motion to approve the, tentatively approve this policy as presented, to lay on the table for 30 days for public comment?
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Ms. Finley. Do I hear a second? Second by Mr. Smith. Any further discussion? All in favor? Five and none opposed. Thank you. As the next action item, approval of minutes. This is approval of minutes for the September 6th call board meeting. September 12th called and regular board meeting. September 27th called meeting and... Let's go down a little bit more. October 4th, I'm sorry. October 4th call board meeting. Now here, a motion to approve these minutes as presented.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Ms. Young. Do I hear a second?
I'll say it.
Second by Ms. Finley. Any further discussion? All in favor? Five and none opposed.
You only did the GMP. This is the lighting, a separate company.
Okay, our project, we missed a, when we were doing the tennis complex, tennis did not include a lighting. This is one of those where we did, I think we've done on previous projects to save money, to eliminate kind of the middle person.
So this is why. 10 and 1/2 percent.
This is why it's separate. So can I have a motion to approve the lighting component for the tennis complex, which is a total of, budget of $188,000? Motion by Mr. Smith. Do I hear a second? Second by Ms. Enos. Any further discussion? All in favor? Five and none opposed. I have number seven. Board member comments? Any comments? Number B. Do I hear a motion to adjourn this regular call meeting?
I'll make a motion to adjourn this regular call meeting.
Motion by Ms. Finley. Do I hear a second? Second by Ms. Enos. Any further discussion? All in favor? Five and none opposed. We are adjourned at 6:44. Thank you all for being here. Have a great evening.